...council for February 5, 2019. And the first item on our agenda is a closed session. I would look for a motion at this time. Can you say what it's regarding?
Strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form or water right or water shares if public discussion of transaction went second.
And security.
Okay. Do you accept that amendment to your motion?
I accept that.
Okay. Second?
Yes, second.
You can't second it because you just made the motion.
Third. Wait, I thought James made the motion.
I'll make the second.
You made the motion, he amended it. Someone seconded, James seconded, oh, Amy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I need to recall this one. Amy?
Yes.
James, Erin?
Yes.
Andrew? And I'm a yes. We're in closed session. We will be reconvened in about 45 minutes.
Gentlemen, behind John.
If you're not here. At 4:30. So anybody who is not supposed to be in our session, thank you for humoring us during our short closed session. We are going to skip the second item on our agenda, which was Budget Amendment Number Three for fiscal year 2018-19. So we'll move to item number three on the agenda, which is Budget Amendment Number Four for fiscal year 2018 and 2019. Ben Ledkey from the council office is here at all, and he can start. And then, I think, yeah, there's Director Reberg, Mary Beth, I saw Mary Beth, oh, there's Mary Beth. And Melissa's not here, but Director Reberg is. So Ben, when you're ready, I'll let you introduce this.
This is Budget Amendment Number Four. And before I dive into the details, Mary Beth has an update on revenue from the increased sales tax that was passed as part of the annual budget last year.
So first, I wanted you all to know that we've only received two months' worth of the half a percent sales tax. So it's in its infancy stage. It is coming in better than projected. Next month is going to be our key. December revenues, which are December, we receive those at the end of February. So I guess this month. So the end of February is going to be a huge dictator on how the revenues will continue to come in. But it looks like we'll probably be on two months' worth of revenue, about $500,000 above budget on the additional half percent sales tax. So that's good news.
Yeah. No, that's great news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. David, from now on, all administrative staff has to start with good news like that. So.
So the timeline is a briefing today, a public hearing on February 12, and potential action on February 12. The council has expedited this budget amendment. There are two items. The first item is the Federal Employee Emergency Loan Program, which is a request to use $100,000 from general fund fund balance. The program would provide one-time, no-interest loans to federal employees who live or work in Salt Lake City or at the three city airports, including the one in West Jordan and the one in Tuilla Valley. The administration estimates that the program would be able to provide loans to 60 to 75 families. The maximum loan would be $1,500. The loan does not have a credit check, and it does not have any fees attached. There's typically an application fee for loans from the city. The repayment would be due three months after the applicant receives their back pay or the shutdown ends. This was developed during the shutdown. There is a risk that the government might shut down again on February 15, depending on Congress passing and the president signing a new budget. The repayment, if it was not received, it could be sent to debt collection, or it could be treated as a grant. So it would be forgivable, and it would not be repaid under that scenario. There are several eligibility requirements that are listed in the transmittal and in the staff report. There is also a limit that applicants need to be less than 100% of the area, at or less than 100% of the area median income. And this is calculated based on the number of persons in a household. There's a table in the staff report which outlines those limits, which are set by HUD each year. The program would also, per City Code Chapter 2.44, Conflict of Interest, it would prevent elected officers, relatives of officers, as well as city employees who work on the loan program, from applying. There is a caveat mentioned in the transmittal that the ethical rules and guidelines vary between federal departments and agencies. So any federal employee who chose to apply to this program, the onus is upon them to make sure that it does not violate the ethical standards of their employer. Council staff made a quick estimate of the number of federal employees in the city. We estimate it's over $1,000. And, excuse me, over 1,000 federal employees. And this is because of the multiple federal employers in the city, not just TSA agents at the three airports, but also the federal courthouses, the Securities and Exchange Commission, the Federal Reserve Branch from San Francisco, and a few federal office buildings.
Ben, I'm sorry, did you just say that we estimate there's 1,000 federal employees working in Salt Lake City regardless of where they reside?
Correct, over 1,000.
And is there a way for us to know how many of those reside in Salt Lake City?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, but we would be receiving information on their residence, right?
On their application.
So I just have to, I feel like we should prioritize Salt Lake City residents who are also federal employees, because I think that this could easily be gone before all, it's 100,000 with a $1,500 limit, right? So we could liquidate all that money and not have reached all 1,000 hypothetically. But I would like us to contemplate a place of residence prioritization for Salt Lake City residents, but I'd love to hear what you guys think. Not to exclude non-residents, but to prioritize.
Prioritize.
Right.
That's what I was going to suggest as well. My other question is, during the furlough, do we have any idea how many, was there anybody from the federal government that reached out to the city looking for loans? And how many of?
No, 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 I'm sorry, no.
There wasn't anyone that reached out? But we know there's a demand for it. How?
Well, so, if I may, Chair Rogers. Pimp, pimp. So.
See, it's already over.
Yeah. I hope you enjoyed that small time of power. We don't know. We don't know what the need was other than, and that's kind of why we put a cap on the AMI. And I do want to raise a couple of policy questions for your consideration on that. We know that by the length of the previous government shutdown and some information that we were able to gather in terms of wages, particularly, we did some looking into like TSA. Obviously, this is broader than just TSA, but that was one area that we were particularly concerned about because of the importance of the TSA at the International Airport and the South Valley Airport and Tuilla Airport to maintain safety. And so we looked a little bit at what their wages were and felt that, if we just looked at that, that that could, the length of the government shutdown could present some financial challenges, fiscal challenges for the families. But we did not have anyone in particular reach out looking for a loan. Where I was nodding my head was, where I thought you were going to ask is initially, and part of the delay in not getting this, we actually had the transmittal ready to go the day the shutdown ended. Staff was amazing and did tremendous work. Initially, when we first were talking about this, we reached out to TSA to find out about eligibility and interest. And we were initially told that federal employees would not, or TSA employees would not be eligible to receive this loan from the city. I think two or three days later, we were actually contacted again by an attorney with TSA, re-engaging and helped us figure out a way. And that's why you see it's kind of separated into two different categories, including all the airports and then all other federal employees, in order to do it. So that was some of the, that's where I was nodding my head, where I thought you were going in terms of the contact. Mr. Chair, if I could also maybe address Councilmember Mendenhall's issue. Definitely a policy call, and we can definitely look at placing that kind of priority in terms of residence. Where I would say we would want to be careful with that was, again, where we kind of started thinking in particular about TSA employees. That was one area, not to, we weren't obviously being exclusive to TSA, but that was one area that we were particularly interested in making sure because of the importance to the city and that they're being furloughed, having to work. And that would be the one concern that we would have about placing a residence requirement, because we know that the TSA employees come from across the valley.
Yeah, and actually, when I look at my notes on the subject, I was hoping to change that language to, and I understand functionally also that we want to get this money out as fast as we can, because the families obviously have been in need for a long time now. And they're back at work, and that repayment thing, right, has already kicked in because, unless it shuts off again on the 21st. But if we could prioritize Salt Lake City residents who are federal employees or who work at a Salt Lake City airport, that feel like it might capture it?
Yeah, that might capture it.
Yeah, I will tell you that I heard, as we were getting closer to the end of the shutdown, that the big concern for TSA workers were daycare, right? People, mortgages were being very forgiving, car loans were being very forgiving, but daycare was one area where they were feeling significant pinch because daycares were not being very forgiving. So that is something to consider when you look at TSA workers having to work.
So functionally, how could that work? Could we say that the first 48 hours of loan availability are for this specific demographic, and then after 48 hours, we open it? Because I don't mean to delay the access.
No, I mean, we can look at that, but I think the way that you're stating it gives us some guidance with that. And so we could take a look at that and let you know. Mr. Chair, if I could also just say that one other policy question that does impact how far the dollars go is the AMI. And when we initially drafted, our initial drafts of this proposal actually limited it at 80% AMI. I became concerned about the 80%, the longer the government shutdown went. And so we were creeping into day like 32, and I said, my gosh, even 100% AMI, maybe we should kick that up. Because we, in some ways, we're talking about being proactive in case there's a shutdown, that is something that we can consider whether to do 100% or start with 80%. And the impact would be, you know, the dollars could go a little bit further. You'd be limiting the eligibility a little bit, but the dollars could go a little bit further. So I just wanted to raise that, because we initially were talking about 80%.
Don't touch it.
You don't touch it, okay.
So, have we talked about the difference between a loan program and a grant program? So it's the intent, okay. So the intent is that the loans be paid back?
We haven't discussed it.
You haven't discussed it?
We've just barely touched on it.
Okay. All right. So maybe, you know, talk a little bit about why, you know, the administration went with the loan route versus the, you know, the grant route.
Well, my, my best guess on that, A, we probably, we didn't even have that conversation, but my best guess on that is we were looking at gap funding, right? We were anticipating that at some point, the government shutdown would, and that there would be that back pay. And so that's why we went the loan route, that is just that gap financing and that the expectation that it would be paid back.
The other way, if you did a grant, we'd have to do a public benefits analysis, because these are all private individuals. We'd have to do individual public benefits analysis for every single grant. So, just so you're aware, that is one of the issues in us doing a loan.
Mr. Chair. I do remember that conversation.
Okay. So, let's say that a loan does go out to an individual, and they default on that loan. What do we do? What's our recourse?
That is precisely my concern.
What's that recourse? Because to me, it's not a fair use of taxpayers' dollars to give to somebody, in essence, that we are guaranteeing them that they will pay it back, and then just say, hey, I'm sorry, it's a grant, we're going to write it off.
So it will go through the collection process, just like all civil collections do now.
Okay.
So the exact same civil collections process. This will be managed through ACT, which is where all civil is at this point in time. We could set payment plans up for these individuals, work with them, you know, to get it paid back as much as we can.
So I'm actually going to disagree. So. I was thinking that we were on the same page, but I think we're on opposite pages now. So that is precisely the concern that I have, that, you know, we have employees who were, the employees of the federal government who were victimized during the shutdown. We then grant a loan to help them, you know, fill that gap. And depending on what happens, we may end up going after them through collections and everything else, which means that they're victimized again. I mean, I don't know. It's, I understand that, you know, it's tough both ways. You don't want to, I mean, it would create, it would be a logistical nightmare to do the grant program for the reason that you're talking about, but it concerns me that, I don't know.
Counselor, if I?
Yeah, Counselor, David?
I almost applied for the district for, just kidding.
Might have been a conflict.
It might have been a conflict. Director Reberg was just whispering in my ear that we appreciate, I mean, your comments dead on, and there's a choice that we make there. But the point that Director Reberg was making is that with unemployment for the federal workers, that was the same situation. So federal workers would have accessed unemployment during the shutdown, and they were going to be asked to pay back as well. So there's some consistency there.
But would it be safe to assume that the city is going to work with any person who is working to pay it back?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Other questions? Andrew?
Just a technical question. I like where we've gone with this, and I appreciate all that. Are you planning on factoring the AMI based on Salt Lake City levels or where they're currently residing? It didn't specify in here. I assume it would be Salt Lake City, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Councilmember Mendenhall?
Could I propose a straw poll, just for clarity, on the prioritization of federal employees who are Salt Lake City residents or who work at a Salt Lake City airport?
Absolutely. So are you all clear on that straw poll? Okay, thumbs up. Oh, yeah.
When you say Salt Lake City, you mean owned by Salt Lake City?
That's right. I don't mean limited to the Salt Lake City airport.
Okay. So all of those in favor of that straw poll prioritizing Salt Lake City residents, thumbs up. And that is unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, there's one other policy question that I'd love to throw out for direction from the council. And I apologize, this actually just came up this last weekend. One of the gaps that we saw during the shutdown and the payback is the contract workers. Right now, the way that this policy is written and the loan program is written, it would not apply to contract workers. It would only apply to federal employees. We've spoken internally about whether to extend that, and we could create some, the criteria would be a little bit different, or not the criteria, but the application process may be a little bit different of what we would. But I wanted to raise that and get your feedback on that. That is, the case, I would say, for doing that would be that those are typically the most low-wage workers. So that we were to have another government shutdown, they would be impacted.
I would just add, for the council's consideration, one of the difficulties with extending this type of a program to contract workers is they are not guaranteed back pay, whereas federal workers are guaranteed back pay regardless if they work the hours during a shutdown.
So do we know, so in your, in the work that you've done, how much, or how many contract workers would you say would be impacted, or were impacted during the shutdown versus federal employees?
That's a great question.
Do you know that answer?
We don't, we don't know that. We could try and find that out, but I'm not sure how we, I mean, we could try and find that out.
So the proposal that's in front of us right now, though, just to be clear, is just the loan program for federal employees.
Correct.
One of the things that I, so I would be very interested in seeing what you come back with, a planned proposal for contract employees. But one of the things that we may want to look at, just because of the nature of those contracts, you know, the contract employee work is substantially different than federal work, we may want to look at the loan program versus, or not, the grant program versus the loan program, because they don't, those workers won't have the ability to repay the loans using some of the back pay. So I understand that that's going to create a more, you know, a much more logistical job, but at the same time, you know, these are the employees that would have a tougher time, anyway. Councilmember Mendenhall?
I'm wondering if it might be easier to do a loan forgiveness clause, just to avoid the individual public benefit analysis of potentially hundreds of people?
Where do we, where do, if we go in with a loan, knowing that we're going into a program with loan forgiveness, does that, that doesn't?
I think we'll have to follow up on that. I don't know that that's enough for this, because each individual person is a private individual. I don't know that a loan forgiveness, but we can follow up.
Can I?
Yeah.
One thing, and I don't know if our attorney who's present would know off the top of her head, but the attorney's office told us that one of the values in having this be part of a budget opening is that the fact that it's advertised as a budget opening means that you don't have to have a separate public hearing. So there's some possibility that because of the way it's being done, it might not necessitate all those public benefit hearings, but we'll check with the attorneys tomorrow, right, together.
Okay. Other questions or comments about the loan program for federal workers? Okay. Thank you, David, for bringing this to, you know, our attention immediately, you know, when this came about. You know, that was a very difficult thing for, you know, many of our employees, and right now, we have so many people working on federal projects in the city that have major impact to what we do. So I appreciate the administration bringing this proposal forward.
Mr. Chair, if I could just also quickly thank the administrative staff, Can, Hand, Finance, and the Attorney's Office for really rallying around the idea, and to the council and council staff for being very open and patient as we were trying to piece something together very quickly. So thank you.
Right. Thanks. Okay. Other items, Ben?
One more item and a note on the item before us. If the council approves the $100,000 from fund balance, the remaining fund balance will be at 10 and 1/2%. And that equates to $1.5 million above the 10% minimum threshold. The one other item in this budget amendment is A2. It is a request to repurpose $20,000 in previously approved contingency funds in the Airport Enterprise Fund. And those $20,000 would be used on gas and food gift cards for airport employees, which are expected to mostly be TSA personnel. That's it for the budget amendment.
All right. Any other comments from the administration? Okay. Thank you all for being here.
Great. I had a couple of questions. Hang on here one second. I just got to find it. Here it is.
James is waiting to ask questions until we're done with the conversation.
Well, we had the airport gag show up, right? What is the amount per gift card that we're looking at per?
So for the 20,000, we are going to base.
Because I know this is different than what we just discussed.
Right. So the way we do it is we would buy $20 increments between gas and food gift cards. We would then turn it over to the field service director assigned to the Salt Lake Airport.
For TSA, right?
For TSA, he would take those gift cards, and he would distribute it, not just to TSA, but Customs, Border Patrol, as well as air traffic control. But he would maintain the record of what employees got what gift cards and what amounts. But $20 is a good threshold to keep everybody out of jail.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Item number four on our work session agenda today is the Funding Our Future, the Transit Interlocal Agreement with the Utah Transit Authority. Kira, and, let's see. Kira, when you are at the table, I will turn the time over to you to introduce this. Ben is here as well. And then Jennifer McGrath, John Larson, and Julianne Sebula from the administration.
All right, just to get us oriented, this is part of the Funding Our Future project, which implemented a 0.5% sales tax increase to address the previously unfunded critical needs of safety, streets, affordable housing, and transit. In the fiscal year 19 budget discussions, the mayor recommended and the council approved $5.3 million to improve transit service. $2.8 million of that funding was allocated for the first year of this partnership with the Utah Transit Authority. The council now has the final draft of the interlocal agreement, which governs collaboration between the city and UTA, and the first addendum, which identifies the first routes to be mobilized in Phase One, which is not the same as Year One, and authorizes the funding to implement it. If approved, the enhanced service would begin August 2019. The addendum authorizes funding for the first year. I'll let the administration speak to the latest updates in these agreements and the next steps for service and these budget allocations. After that, there should be time for questions and answers between the council and administration. And if we still have time after that, I would be delighted to walk through some of the policy questions in the staff report.
So we did not have a formal presentation. We've presented several times over the fall and really just tied up some loose ends. And so hopefully, there aren't any big surprises from what you've seen previously. But Julianne's going to give kind of a rundown of the changes in this final draft versus where we were when we last spoke about this in December.
Great. Thank you.
So last time we were here, we outlined three items. Just to restate the general frame of the agreement, there's the master agreement, and that's kind of the rules by which we play for 20 years. Then the addenda, which identifies specific mobilization costs in the first year. And then, in a future allocation, will address the cost of service during the second year. So last time we were here, we had three items that were still unresolved. And those items were inflation rate, cost of paratransit being added to the service, and the administrative overhead costs. And all of these related to our cost calculator. It's a spreadsheet that is complex and requires a lot of discussion, but it didn't result in giant changes. The agreement probably looks very, very similar to what you've already seen. There's a few numbers, some adjustments to the exhibits. We also discovered a couple of errors along the way. We checked in with finance just to make sure we had everything as we discussed it.
The error benefit.
What's that?
The error benefit.
Oh, I don't know, actually. I think us, because our cost came in lower.
And a few typos, this sorts of things, where, you know, swap, we had some accidental swapping back and forth of Exhibit A versus Exhibit One sort of stuff.
Yeah. So we did do a pretty exhaustive exploration of all of the various ways to calculate some of these things. The first two were pretty easy. Administrative costs are always tricky, and they're not tracked in as clear a way as some other things are. So that was the one that probably required the most time, but we feel like we really did our due diligence on that piece. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about. did our due diligence on that piece, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that specifically, but obviously any of these items. We would, we did work closely with finance, legal, and then several UTA departments have an interest in getting this right, and making sure everything's accurate and will accommodate their needs. We adjusted some exhibits to reflect some of the, some of the decisions that we made, and then we added information about the administrative, administrative costs, and this was primarily for the sake of transparency. It didn't really change anything, but we felt like it was a little more clear what it is we're paying for. And then finally, we added a look back, and really, it's because city-sponsored transit service increases are new to us, they're new to UTA. We've never collaborated in this way, and we're going to learn as we go, we hope. Hopefully not by a lot of mistakes, but we do want to be able to check in at least every two years until we feel like we've got a really stable, smooth-running system in place. And, let's see, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, and we did give an initial draft of this first addendum that will come up in the next budget allocation, so this isn't part of the resolution today that we're discussing, but it is something that I think is really key to understanding the agreement and how it will work with service. So, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, so, building on that, I think it's just worth noting, and this is something, you know, we've mentioned before, but, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces involved with this, but what, the resolution that we've put before you doesn't actually have the funding for the Year 1 service, it has the funding for the ramp-up costs for that. So, in the budget season is when we look forward to working with you on the adoption. We have a draft addendum in there that we can revisit during the budget season that will actually fund Year 1 service, and that's for Second South, Ninth South, and 21st South. So, we think that we could do the Sixth North and Tenth North services early as 2021, but that would require, including ramp-up costs, in the next fiscal year. So, that would take it, the, the first three routes that are funded is basically an $8 million total transit program, adding in Sixth and Tenth North would bump that up to a $12 million program. So that's something that we're going to have to talk through in the coming months.
The ramp-up costs for Sixth and Tenth North would be $2 million?
Um, we, we're working with UTA on exactly what those costs will be, and we'll get back to you, but we don't exactly know that yet.
Okay.
Councilmember Menon Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions, and you're right, there's no big surprises in here. Mostly, I'm appreciative that we're at this point. Thank you. Yeah, it's exciting. So, I'm wondering, these are some really good policy questions that Kira has brought up, and I underlined many of them. One of them particularly around sponsorship, and I, I do, I would like to know about whether or not those discussions have been coordinated around sponsored fare, and then I want to tag on to the data question, number three, if there is, if those conversations have begun at all, if there's any data that we can acquire that would aid in accelerating sponsorship and private investment in the system.
I'm processing a little bit the, the question and looking at this policy question in the staff report. So, we have been developing a scope of work that I think is near final. We had a discussion about it just yesterday in terms of a fare analysis and the obstacles to expanding our fare programs. But we also have been talking a lot with the development community, for example. We have a lot of cranes in the air and a lot of development proposals in the queue, and so there's a real interest in having, especially in high-density housing, transit as a really robust viable option, both just in terms of promoting those properties to potential residents, but also then having people utilize transit and minimize demands on parking. So, we have had those conversations with the development community as well. Is that the type of information you're asking about?
Yeah, I guess I want to know a little bit. It sounds like the development community is aware of an opportunity, you're aware of an opportunity, what happens next that gets us closer to an expansion of the zone?
Yeah, the free fare zones expansion specifically, I think that's going to have to be really driven by the, the business community and those who, I think it's the Downtown Alliance that covers those costs now. So, and there's always secondary impacts. It came up in a community council meeting with Central Ninth, that at first they were really excited about the thought of it. Over the course of the meeting, you can kind of see that arc of enthusiasm of, at first, they thought, well, yeah, that'd be awesome, let's extend down to Ninth South, and then they were saying, well, wait, hold on, now, does that mean that more people are going to be parking in front of my house and riding transit for free into town? And so, there's some of those sorts of conversations that have to happen as well. But then with the broader sponsored service discussion, it's something that we've been talking about internally and with UTA and others really since last summer, and the biggest challenge that I've run into with it is that it's really hard to pin down the options. It just seems to just proliferate, because you have some people who think that UTA ought to just find a way to have free fare or sponsored fare system-wide, or maybe county-wide, or, you know, there's a lot of developers that are willing to help subsidize fare for their, their renters, or, sorry, landlords that would subsidize for their renters in, in exchange for not having to provide as much parking, or, you know, are there ways to have more small businesses that can participate?
Is there any data collection that we aren't doing that could help advance any of those desires?
Um, we'll have to, can we get back with you on that?
Yes, please.
Because I think that's a great question.
Yeah, because I would love to make specific requests around some metrics that could help us advance those conversations that are important to the business community, important to people in housing, and important to the city. So, yes, please. Another one I want to ask about is, actually, I want to say that I am not interested in the council reviewing 21A 46060, for all those people who know what that means.
Can, you're-
I don't want to put advertising on bus stops.
Got it, okay.
And I wanted to know what the, what attorneys think about the dispute resolution, and the language that currently doesn't identify a mechanism to evolve disputes, that, that language is, I guess, typically in an ILA? Will you, you need to come up to a mic, though, sorry.
While she's coming up, Councilmember Menon Hall, what if it were to be used with advertising the actual bus routes?
Oh, except for us?
Yes.
That's pretty good, I like that.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we can actually advertise what's going on and the differences that are, these routes are going to make for the neighborhoods?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if we specifically tie it to transportation?
It's got to be more specific.
Yeah. Have to come up and talk more about that one.
Hi, Megan Napollos from the Salt Lake City Attorney's Office. So, you asked why the dispute resolution language isn't specifically outlined in the ILA, is that correct?
Right, for elevated disputes.
Yeah. So, that language isn't necessarily in every ILA. In fact, I've only seen it in a few that I've worked on. I haven't been in the city for that long, so it may be in a lot more. And part of the problem with that outlining those kinds of dispute resolution processes is that committees change, positions change, titles change, and then you end up having to redesignate people, you know, and trying to get your committee to work together. In the case with this relationship, I feel like the, the technical groups from UTA and the city are working together constantly. So, I feel like most of them are going to be working at that level with those good working relationships to go ahead and just go ahead and resolve those disputes at the lower level and not need to escalate them, and if they do, they each have their own chain of command to do that. So I just don't think it's necessary. It's certainly something if council feels is very important, we could add to the agreement, and I don't think UTA would have too many oppositions to that, but we would have to get their sign off as well.
Well, I appreciate that, Megan, and it sounds like you're going to jump in, John, but it brings up my last question, which is how will the city choose our representative? Because that wasn't explicit either.
Yeah, and I think for the, the points that Megan just said, and I think it's highlighted by the fact that UTA has had a lot of changes in titles and positions over the last year, and so designating specific positions, it can, it just kind of becomes cumbersome. But what we've talked about is that really the, the points of contact for, you know, staff level, technical level dispute resolution would be the Transportation Director for Salt Lake City and the Planning Director for UTA.
I meant, I'm referring to Item 10 on the public, on the policy questions, which isn't necessarily about dispute resolution, but it's about the city's designated representative on the ILA.
Oh, that, I think that would stay the same as well. So, for ILA issues, or also dispute resolution issues. So that would be, currently, that'd be me and Laura Hanson.
Okay.
Councilmember Johnston?
Thank you. First question on the frequent, nice job, by the way. I'm super excited, as you probably know already. On the frequency discussion, have the school districts and employers been specifically targeted to ask their feedback on the proposals for the Number 2, the 9, and the 2021?
On specifically frequency?
Yeah.
Like, how often we run the buses?
How often, how late, how, the balance between Saturday, Monday through Friday versus Saturday, and the 15-minute increments, all that kind of thing. Have they been consulted much? How's that happened?
So, we have, in our Transit Master Plan, we have established minimums, and that's what, we're, we're buying up to that minimum, although if UTA chooses to provide more, and in the case of the 2, they are doing that because operationally it's easier. They can. And so, it'll be the same service Monday through Saturday, and it will run from 5:00 AM to midnight. It'll be every 15 minutes until 7:00 PM, and every half hour thereafter. The first hour, I think, is 30-minute service as well, from 5:00 to 6:00. Then Sundays, it's 30-minute service from 7:00 to 7:00.
I ask that because if you look at the chart, it is uniform Monday through Saturday and different on Sunday, but if employers and schools have different requirements on weekday nights, particularly past 7:00 PM, has that been brought up or talked about as a question?
Does that come up in the, in the Master Plan discussions?
Okay. I would just ask that maybe be approached at some point. I like the uniformity, makes it easy to remember and do it, and the half-hour increments are frankly better than we have now, period. So I'm not overly concerned, but if this could be tailored a little more perhaps, as needed, to those kind of needs, employment in school particularly, I'd be interested in hearing that. The second, somewhere between a question and a concern or a statement, somewhere in there it's going to be. Sponsorship is a huge, huge deal, right? We think we've talked about that we need to help folks get on the bus. The frequency is a huge piece and access to it, but then what does a hive pass look like? How is that going to look? And so, I see in here the 30,000 allocated. I, I don't necessarily see a timeframe or a goal, or some sort of objective we're trying to get to and what timeframe to get this going. So I'd like to see that, if possible. I know it gets complicated when you get into the weeds, and I appreciate that. But I would like to see sort of, we have a target to get a understanding of when, because if we're trying to isolate factors, right, is frequency going to increase our, our ridership when it implements? How much? Is it a combination of that and other factors such as a unified pass or a hive pass, or something along those lines? So we can really drill down at some future date with the data and say what bang for the buck helps us get our ridership and people really respond to positively. I'm interested in hearing that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I can talk a little bit about, I hope this isn't too far afield, but mobility as a service is something that we've been working really hard on, and it's kind of like a hive on steroids. And so, you know, really, in your phone primarily, but by a pass, whatever mechanism is available to people, that you have your whole suite of transportation options that you can plan and pay for in one place. You can have a subscription, a monthly subscription at varying levels, and that's what we're really working toward in partnership with UDOT and UTA. We were unsuccessful in our attempt to get an American Dream Ideas Challenge Grant, and so, but we are not stopping as a result of that. We're charging forward with that concept, and so that big picture is sort of the end game we have in mind. In the meantime, we've identified a couple of, and I am not the person who's an expert on this, so I know in broad brush, some things that are really almost internal obstacles related to our own ordinances and practices that I think that we can free ourselves up to do more, and that's probably the first thing to knock down before expanding. We are, I, I've requested some information about free fare zone and its current cost, some of the basics that I think will get us started, and then we're interested in initiating a very small contract to get a little bit of consultant help with analyzing this. So, does that-
Sure, I, I, you know, I'd love a free fare zone, but if we're not going to do advertisements on stops, and we're going to go and limit our, our, in our revenue for this, I don't think it's reasonable. So, I'm more interested in making it as easy as possible and as cost-effective as possible with some personal investment. So, I'd be interested in seeing those options and what the costs would be, so we can talk about how we may find ways to do that.
Councilmember Johnston, to your point about the sponsorships, and I don't think that, I mean, we haven't had that discussion. I know that Councilmember Menon Hall, you know, raised the point earlier, but, but that has not been a discussion, but I, I'm open to it, because I, you know, I'm, I would rather see more options, you know, and if, if we can do more through sponsorship, I, I'm not at all opposed to it. So, I think that's a discussion that we can have later.
I agree with that person, so.
But, yeah, but, but, yeah, we haven't, we haven't taken a position on, on that, so.
So, oh, sorry. So, something that'd be helpful for us is maybe a direction from, from the council as far as how, how open you are to kind of rethinking or adding some flexibility to the hive pass, maybe expanding it. It sounds like yes. But, you know, so we're talking about things like, you know, could we work with UTA to develop maybe a family pass, or for people who only need transit, or only ride transit on occasion, like maybe people who have committed to only ride on red air days, or every Friday or something. So, a monthly pass doesn't make sense for them, but maybe they could use that same hive-type partnership to be able to get a, a fare card charged up that they only use, you know, four times a month, but at least that's better than nothing, and they're kind of getting their foot in the door. So, what we'd like to do is come up with some things this spring to recommend that we can implement right away, and then come up with some recommendations for, you know, one to five years that we can start chipping away at it.
Sorry, that works for, you know, what I would like to see. I, you know, for us, I think more opt, the more options you can, you know, present us, the better. And, you know, once we have those options, then we can have a more deliberate discussion about, no, we don't want it, we don't want any, you know, bus stop sponsorships in the city. We just need to, I mean, it's easy to have the discussion now, because we don't know what we're saying no to. So, I would say, present us with options. This is the first phase, I think this is good, but, you know, what I would like to see is, you know, other options. If, if sponsorship is something, great. If expanding the hive pass is something wonderful, let's, let's talk about it. One, one thing that I would like to do, I don't need to suspend the rules because I don't think it's technically in the rule, but our practice is, you know, we usually, we don't invite other groups to the table, but I know that UTA is here, and if my colleagues would be okay, I would like to invite UTA up for a couple of questions, if that's okay.
I agree with that. Could I say something in response to the question about direction from us?
Yes.
I, I think that we're looking at the frequency very effectively. We're looking at access based on where the routes are in the next two, three phases very effectively. It's that financial access piece that's a question for me still. So, your response is, I would personally be very favorable to looking at a hive-like concept for city residents that is unifying across multiple platforms, is cost-effective for, and flexible for families particularly, kids, parents, and based on, not necessarily riding every day, but periodically enough to test it out. enough to test it out. And something along those lines, I'd be very supportive of. And then obviously analyzing the cost, right? How do you do that effectively? Because I really think the access piece is gonna be as simple as possible, reliable, so we don't get stranded, and I don't waste money. Because the folks who are gonna probably need this are the ones who can't afford to toss 10 bucks in the trash, right? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I see Nicole from UTA. If you want to come up to the table while you're making your way up, I know that Councilmember Rogers has a
Two.
Two questions.
Two quick questions. So 10th North and 6th North, when will the ask be, do you think, for that funding?
As soon as we want to do it. So the soonest we feel that we can, it requires a ramp-up phase, just like these first three routes. And that would happen, could happen as early as next fiscal year. So we can come to you in the next budget. Really with that, those mobilization costs, the following year is when the service changes would go into place. It would represent that a little over $12 million scenario, and so that's also a discussion. But we do have funding we didn't know about when the last budget was done, so.
And then my follow-up question would be, the 800 and, is it 62,000, whatever it is, you would like 20% in the, I want to call it, as a reserve account, right? Or are you looking for more than that? Because right now it sits at 40%. So my question is, what if we dropped it to 20% and you use that funding to put in the bus benches? Or what we're looking at for the amenities on these routes to help streamline that as well and jumpstart it?
Because what we have right now, I think it's what, 823,419 dollars that's unallocated. Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I, this is what I wanted to bring up also.
Yeah.
And I met with the administration earlier today about plans for the HRC communities. And particularly, the High Avenue Paramount site has a lot of challenges around accessing transit in the area, simply even by sidewalk. So I was wondering if with that funding, setting up an appropriate contingency, and then asking the administration to come back to the council with some proposals, how we could use the money for transit investment, and whether that's bus stops in those areas or what, I don't know. But we've identified quite a few needs in that half-mile radius around the HRCs, particularly the High Avenue one. So I want to bring that up.
Do you want to propose a straw poll?
Yeah, I would like to, that the administration come back to the council with a proposal to utilize whatever remaining after a 15% contingency is created from the 823,000 excess right now, to utilize that remaining funding for prioritization of transit-oriented investment in the HRC communities.
Okay.
And a little bit in addition, because I think this is also a planning scenario, in my opinion. It would, can also look for ways to streamline the processes with these other lines as well. You know, whether they're shelters, bus shelters, or whatever we're looking at. But I can see the reasoning behind that focusing around the HRCs, but I think there's plenty of opportunity there, not just to focus it there, but to broaden it in that aspect.
Yeah, this is the year of the HRCs, you know, and we committed as council a couple of years ago to making sure that those communities, that we can do right by them in as many ways as possible. So this is a theme that I think, I hope I'm not the only one raising every time we look at an opportunity to be intentional and prioritize needs. These are really real needs to, really actually ADA needs in that area are pretty significant. So I'll bring it up in other regards, but this is an opportunity that wouldn't hurt.
Just like to piggyback, and so they're, they're together.
So to look citywide and at HRCs.
Well, not citywide, just specifically tied to the roots, whether they're the future phases or current phases. But specifically, I'm fine with it looking at HRCs primarily, and then looking at it as well in the same time.
So what if, what if we did this? What if staff, or not staff, you know, transportation, if you can work on a couple of the points that Councilmember Rogers was talking about, just looking at how to expand and do what he's looking for, the 1800, or 823,419 minus the 15% contingency per Councilmember Mendenhall's straw poll would then be used primarily in the areas around the HRCs to deal with some of the transit issues related to that. That way, you're getting, you know, we're still keeping the priority moving forward on those additional lines or expanding that additional service. But the money that would be, that's in front of us right now, could go towards what Councilmember Mendenhall was talking about. And then in future years, there will probably be other adjustments that we can, that we can have. So to paraphrase Councilmember Mendenhall's straw poll, it would be allocating the, that remaining money minus the 15% contingency, and looking at options surrounding the two HRCs to improve transit access, ACA, or ADA ability, or ability, or accessibility issues. And anything else?
No, I just think transit-related, because that's what we said we
So that's what the money would be for. And then Councilmember Rogers' points, y'all could work on that separate. Does that make sense? Thumbs up that you support that, thumbs down that you oppose it.
I have a discussion about the 20% versus 15%.
Sure.
That's my only hangup.
Okay.
I'd feel safer with 20% at this point until we know what we're talking about going in future. And then if it is 15% or whatever we have, I'm fine keeping the rest and doing what we're talking about.
Okay. Councilmember Mendenhall, would you be okay with the 20% instead of 15% in your original motion?
Sure.
Okay. So it's now at 20% instead of 15%. Thumbs up that we support that, thumbs down that we oppose it. Okay, and that is unanimous. Nicole, so if you want to make room for Nicole.
Because Councilmember Mendenhall gave us a heads up, we actually can speak at least in part to this question, if you'd like us to, right now.
To the HRC need.
To the needs, the 800,000, all of that.
If you're, no, if you're ready, yeah, if you're ready to talk about how you'd spend that money, let's hear some of the ideas.
So I would like to, I guess, make two points. One is that we, we have asked and you allocated over $1 million for capital investments that is available this fiscal year, that could be used for, and that we were planning on using for improving bus stops and first-last mile access to the frequent transit network routes. And we believe, our interpretation of that is that that could include everything that's on Phase 1, including the Rose Park routes. And that's something that we're, we would like to see as an ongoing allocation of capital investments, so that we can continue to improve the capital, the, not only the bus stops, but then the first-last mile enhancements around all the bus stops on all the frequent transit network routes. And, and then the, the other point that I'd like to make is the need to have a buffer for the operations, because that's something that is, once we make that commitment, that's gonna be an ongoing need. And the prices can fluctuate year to year as well as revenue. And so I would recommend building up a reserve of probably three to six months' worth of service that we are able to put in kind of an account that's firewalled just for operations, so that if we have a downturn
You're talking $3 million, once the Rose Park routes are added as well?
Yeah. Yeah. So once we are, have ramped up to like a $12 million program, I think you should have about a $3 million reserve that is just for kind of a rainy day fund for just operations. And that way, not if, but when we have another recession, we're not cutting evening and weekend service, but we're able to kind of work our way through it.
One other thing, I'm sorry. I want to bring something up with that. I would love to have administration come back to us with a proposal. We just heard from Mary Beth earlier that it, it looks like we might have more than we budgeted on the sales tax revenue that's coming in now. I would love to hear a proposal for how we can, in times of more revenue, yeah, plan for the times in need and help set us up for those contingencies.
Thank you. We can do that.
In addition to being able to utilize the over $1 million that was set aside for capital improvements, which we can look at some improvements on Third West right away, see how quickly we can move those forward. One of the things we heard very clearly, both from the administration and the council, was the desire to solidify these routes and make sure that they can go on in perpetuity, that people can count on these routes, they can change their lifestyle based on knowing that these routes will be there. And for us, that is what emphasizes the importance of having a rainy day fund. What we don't want to have happen is, we, we are in a prosperity time right now, and so what we want to do is be very forward-thinking about revenues may come in differently next year or the following year, costs may fluctuate. And what we want to do is protect these routes, so that the people of Salt Lake City know that they can count on them. And we've preserved something on the side to make sure that in hard times, we do whatever we can to not have to pull back on that.
Great. So, you know, it is a little bit different that we would have, you know, that I would invite UTA up. But, but the main reason I wanted to do that, and then we'll, if there are questions for Nicole or Nicole, if you have any comments. But really, I wanted to thank you for, you know, on behalf of the council, for the work that UTA has done, the collaboration with the administration. I want to thank administrative staff for working with UTA. This is a unique situation that we, as a city, have not done before. It's one that has been discussed many different times, but, you know, it's always easier to discuss things conceptually. Once you actually have to put it in practice and start, you know, making those ideas come to life, it is much more difficult. So I just want to acknowledge all the work that you've done, both from the administration, UTA. And, you know, this is an exciting thing that hopefully we can expand as, as we move forward. So with that, do any of you have any questions specifically for UTA regarding these proposals? Okay. All right.
I'd just like to say thank you to the council and the administration. I think this has been exciting for us. Your support with the council and the administration and UTA, to do more frequent service, to support our community together, is a great partnership. We appreciate every one of you using your capital and working with us to move this forward. It's gonna help both of us. And we, we're looking at this as a model to take to other communities and private partnerships, to show how we can work together to provide the best service to our community. So we thank you. We love this. This is exciting for us. I get chills when I think about that 9th South service. It's, it's really important. And I would just like to say, Councilmember Johnston, we did work with the University of Utah and the Salt Lake City School District on those times, making sure that they could do after-school programming and, and that frequency work. So we, we did work, this has been a long time coming. So I did want to say that UTA did look at those times with the school district and the U of U, and they are super supportive of this, too. So Salt Lake City has done a lot for the community, and we thank you.
Great. Well, if there are no further questions, thank you all for being here. Oh, Andrew.
Yeah, this, this, this is not UTA, sorry, Nicole. When we talk about transportation-related stuff, we may want to look at that a little closer. I say that because on the Paramount Avenue area, with the nine changing routes, there's no bus running on Third between 13th and 17th. So doing upgrades there doesn't do much good for us on that street. The big issue, frankly, is more around transportation. And I say that because it's about snow removal in the wintertime, because it's not, sidewalks don't get prioritized in that area, and it's impossible to get from tracks very effectively anywhere outside of there, and the width of the sidewalks. So it may not be transit-specific, the needs in that area. So we may need to talk a little bit about what that means, transportation kind of focus for this funding, or find other funding for that, so.
Okay. And to, you know, since Councilmember Mendenhall missed some of that, but, no, it's okay. So, you know, what, what Councilmember Johnston was talking about is that, you know, we may want to look at some other uses for that funding, you know, whether it's, you know, the, or more transportation-based. So if we need to do snow removal, for example, or something else, and my guess is that that would fit with what you're talking about. It may not, but I think having that discussion is, you know, keeping it at least open works.
Thank you. And I, you know, Charlie, you were really bastion for us sticking to what we said we were gonna spend the money on and nothing more. So I'm with you on that, and I think come back with whatever your interpretation is of what we said when we decided to do the sales tax increase, and then we can talk about it.
Yeah, and we don't, it, there is no intent at all of having a bus stop where there's not a bus. So, you know, we know that we don't just want to spend the money, so.
I ask that because theoretically, what you could be looking at is a study of pedestrian patterns in the neighborhood based on that, with, and then figure out from there what the upgrade might be, because it could be a little more nuanced and interesting about how we most effectively save, say, Lowe's from being overrun through their parking lot by folks, also crossing at the tracks, crossing instead of at the crosswalks, because of sidewalk width on 13th particularly. There's some issues in there that may not fit our intent for this money, but we need to find in our budget how we address those, because it would affect this.
Okay. So one, one idea that, that we may want to do, I mean, and I don't think we need to necessarily convene a formal subcommittee, a formal council subcommittee, but I would say that if, if there are councilmembers who are interested, I would say Councilmember Mendenhall and Councilmember Johnston in particular on this issue. If anybody else would like to, you know, work with the administration and the UTA on, on some of this and how we move forward, maybe we can, you know, maybe that's a way to do it, so that, you know, you're not coming up with brilliant ideas that are different from what, what we're thinking. That way everyone's thinking together. Does that work?
I like it.
Okay. All right. Could I quickly plug two big projects that are in the pipeline over the next year or two, that are right near the HRCs? We got county funding for a life-on-state catalytic site, is what we're calling it. So 6th South to 9th South is going to get a huge facelift. I know that, and we're also partnering with the RDA on that to, you know, further enhance that. So that's something that could move forward as early as the 2020 construction season. And then Third West is on the list for, with the Streets Bond for Reconstruction, basically from downtown all the way to the, the city line. And I think we're all painfully aware of, Third West needs more than just a facelift. And it's gonna, we're, we're planning on getting, doing a complete makeover on that one. And that, actually, we just, and engineering is taking the lead on that. We're working closely with them, so that not only will the pavement be improved, but it'll be better for the four blocks where we have the bus stops between 13th and 17th, and then vastly improve the experience for walking and biking as well for the length of the corridor. So.
Great.
And the RFP for design is out on that right now, for Third West.
Well, it's exciting. Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next, I'm gonna rearrange the agenda a little bit.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes.
Just a technical note for the council. We will work with the administration to get an updated addendum based on the changes to the budget and the contingency amounts that were straw-pold today. It currently lists the full budget amounts, so we'll want to bring that down to reflect the 20% instead of 40% contingency.
Okay.
And then the remaining budget that the council just discussed, we would want to add to a budget amendment or hold and wait for the recommendations from the administration.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so last time, so when I was chair before, I developed a reputation of being not very friendly towards breaks that we had listed on the agenda. So unfortunately, I guess I'm gonna continue that. My request of my colleagues is that we ignore the tentative break that we had scheduled since we started late, and readjust the agenda to now deal with, or interview the board appointees that we have listed. We would then follow that by the rezone of 545 and 555 West, 5th North, and then our legislative update. Does that work with everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So item number seven on our agenda is Board Appointment for the Community Development and Capital Improvement Programs Advisory Board, Heidi Development and Capital Improvement Programs Advisory Board, Heidi Steed. Is Heidi here?
She is.
Heidi? Welcome, Heidi.
You can pick any seat and any microphone. All right. I'll pick this middle one.
Okay, well, thank you for your willingness to serve. If you could just tell the council, you know, your name and what your interest is in the CDCIP Board.
Okay, yes. Hi, I'm Heidi Steed. I'm a District 1 resident, lifelong District 1 resident, so born and raised here in Salt Lake City. Very active in my community. I love living in Salt Lake City, and I think that this CIP Board is going to be a great opportunity for me to really dig in and learn a lot about how the city functions and the processes for improving things in our city, improving the quality of life of the citizens of Salt Lake City. I've had the opportunity to go to a few of the meetings and watch some of the discussions, and I'm really looking forward to that, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions for Ms. Steed?
Not a question, more of a comment. She's going to be fantastic.
Oh, why, thank you.
I'll run into you in the grocery store.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. So, the way that this is going to move forward, and to the other board appointees, this pertains to y'all as well. We will, you're on the consent agenda for our formal meeting. You don't need to stay. You're welcome to, if you'd like. It's the end of our formal meeting, but we thank you for your willingness to serve on this committee.
Thank you all for your time.
The next is Board Appointment for Parks, Natural Lands, Urban Forestry and Trails Advisory Board, Samantha Finch. Hello, Ms. Finch.
Hello. Good evening.
Again, just introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in serving on the peanut board.
Name is Samantha Finch from District 7, Amy Fowler's district. Good evening, Amy. Hi, good. Interested in the board because of just a long interest of mine in land use, zoning, planning, and open spaces. And I consider myself an outdoor recreationalist, use the trails and the local parks within the city, take an interest in how their viability, interested in capital improvements. And I went, I'm, by training, I'm an attorney, like Amy, went to law school, and actually, a big reason that brought me to law school was land use, open spaces, and just how the public uses the land and sets aside land for green spaces. So, yeah, land use was a big draw of mine, always an interest. And when I saw this opening on the board, I applied, just thought it would suit my interests, and I have a bit of an educational background. I'd like to actually put some of my educational background training in this field and apply it to my community. It really was my interest.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Fowler?
I just want to say, Samantha, that was really loud. I didn't want to say that, but I have been, congratulations. I think this is great, and I'm really excited to see you involved still, and you always have been, and I appreciate it. So, thanks for doing this. I think it's going to be awesome.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your support.
Councilmember Mendenhall?
Yeah, it's good to see you again, and I want to thank you for finding a way to become engaged in the boards and commissions in the city. We're, this is one of my favorite parts of council meetings, is meeting our residents who are willing to volunteer their time and expertise to help the city advance. And I'll say, quite frankly, there's not many people who run a campaign and then decide to find another way to get engaged. We don't see many candidates, past candidates up here, so I appreciate that.
I appreciate opportunities, wherever they are, big or small.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next board appointment is for, also the peanut board, Jenny Hewson.
Hello.
Hello, Jenny. So, you know the drill now.
I do. Actually, I benefit, right, from having seen the last two. So, I, for the last 15-plus years, I've been working on international land management, sustainability issues, and climate change, and I would like to do something that is more local, to balance out my, what I do internationally. I use the trail system extensively and have a vested interest in open lands and parks, et cetera. So, I thought it would be a nice opportunity.
Great. Questions or comments? Councilmember Mendenhall?
Just curious if you could tell us a little bit more about your work that is, that dovetails with this kind of volunteerism.
Yeah, so I, my background's in remote sensing, so I interpret satellite imagery, and I work with countries to help them monitor their forests in terms of sustainability, in terms of deforestation, et cetera. And I engage a lot with ministries, so I'm used to working with a whole broad spectrum of people and kind of balancing different ideas. And every time my flight lands back in Salt Lake, I head to the trails. So, I have a vested interest in what happens in my local community.
Thanks for being willing to work here, too.
All right.
Yes, thank you. All right, so you will be on the consent agenda in our formal meeting tonight as well. So, thank you for your willingness to serve.
All right. Thank you.
So, we will now go back to number six on our agenda, which is our request to rezone of 545 and 555 West, 500 North. Nick Tarbet is going to introduce this topic, and he is joined by Michaela Okte and Kachi Pace from Plankton.
So, councilmembers, this may be one that you've heard of a couple of times since 2012, right? What we have here tonight is a request that the council had approved a rezone back in 2012, to rezone the properties at 545, 555 West, from SR1A and SR3 to TSA, and the rear of the parcels at 555 West, 500 North, from SR1A to SR3. The council had approved the rezones subject to the applicant, subject to a condition that the applicant would dedicate the private street to the city eventually, when they completed the construction of it. At the time, the applicant was okay with it. They thought that would be long-term beneficial for them, so they agreed to it. Since then, there's been four extensions granted, and the applicant has requested that, and this was last year, the applicant requested that that condition be removed. They're finding it difficult over the last couple of years to do, to move forward on the project, and just having to come back every couple of years takes a lot of the time from them and from the council. And so, staff is recommending, or so, last year, I should also explain, we thought that we could work this out through a development agreement. We had that good idea here at the table, but then the attorneys told us that it doesn't work that easily. So, we've since learned the development agreement's not going to work, and so the council has the option to either continue extending the resolutions for this ordinance, or to remove the condition, which is what the applicant is asking for. So, staff's recommendation is there's been other similar rezones in the past, where the council's approved a rezone but not required the street to be brought up to city standards and dedicated to the city. So, staff is recommending that that condition be removed, and just go back to what the planning commission's recommendation was, which had a few conditions on it. Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Councilmember Rogers?
I guess I'm looking at options for consideration, then staff is recommending option number one. Yeah. And that is to go, like I said, to go back to what the planning commission had recommended with their conditions. Thank you. I know that this is, I think it's the fourth time it's come in my short time with the council, so I'm ready to move on with it, so, and do the referral from the staff, so, thanks.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Does the applicant wish to speak? Okay. All right. If there are no other, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Johnson keeps waiting until the last possible minute, until the discuss, until I'm ready to move on.
You literally looked like this. Any questions? I knew you went right there. I'm a re-deliberate body here. A question about if the street remains private, the utilities under the street?
So, one of the comments from Public Utilities back when this was being presented as a plan development was that the utilities be replaced, both water and sewer. So, I, my understanding is that that requirement would still be applicable even if the road is still private.
So, they would be responsible to replace the sewer water? It would still be private line, though, running from the, from, was it the 6th? North, was it 5th, 5th North?
Hi, I'm just going to bop in and say that it's the, my name's Margaret Paul, and I represent the applicant in this case. And it is the property owner's desire to still dedicate the street. It takes a lot of money and investment to construct the new sewer main and the new water main and all of the laterals, et cetera, and as well as install the pedestrian access, the storm drain, the curb and gutter. And so, it's the property owner's intention to, when they record the plat, to have that street dedicated for public use. The hiccup in the condition on the rezoning was the timeframe. And so, that's why Councilmember Rogers has, you know, talked about seeing us four times, because, you know, we just haven't had the time to get all the construction drawings, et cetera, and the subdivision prepared. The planning commission, the preliminary plat approval and the plan development approval that were originally applied for and granted in 2012 have expired. So, the applicant will be required to go back through that entire process. And this request simply saves them the burden of adding the zoning again to that, to that re, you know, reconsideration of the original plans.
Okay. Yeah, my concern is simply that we ran into in my district a circle that had a water main leak or break. None of the residents realized it was a private line, because years and years back, whatever the agreement had been, nobody was aware of it, and therefore, they're on the line.
Yeah.
The city was on the line, and the sewer was city, the water was, well, the sewer was private, the water was city. And so, my concern is making sure that it's coherent, it's clear, when this body's no longer here, perhaps.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, those professionals at Public Utilities won't let you get away with that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's all my concern, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Wharton?
I just was very close to moving into one of the houses on title court once, and I think, so I've seen the work that you guys are doing, and I think that it's really has so much potential, and it's just a really cute little gem in that area of the neighborhood. So, thanks for what you're doing, and I wish you best of luck going forward. Yes, you're welcome. And you have some really nice residents.
Okay, seeing no further questions or comments. Thank you all. Thank you very much for being here, and.
So, this will be on for the 19th for final consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now at number 10 on our agenda, which is our state legislative briefing. David Litback is here. Mary Beth is going to be here as well. Lynn Pace, I saw, so he'll make his way up, I'm sure. Okay, while we're waiting for Lynn, since we're all about efficiency here, I'm going to turn the time over to our council executive director, Cindy Gess Jensen, to talk about council announcements.
Oh, now there's Lynn.
Oh, that's okay. Now Lynn can wait.
Oh, well, okay. Sorry. All right, so the, you have on your agenda a grant, public hearing for this evening, and there are three potential grants that relate to bike share expansion, and they are all tied to Green Bike. A couple of councilmembers have asked staff, with all of the movement, movement, huh, sorry, happening with bicycles, scooters, that type of a thing, whether it would be timely for the council to have a discussion or to receive some information from the administration about this topic. The total match amount is $80,000. So, one idea that staff came up with is just to ask the council, the administration, if they would come back with a briefing, and then, you know, the council could also put a condition on that no more than $25,000 be spent in match for this topic, and tell the councils had the opportunity to get a better understanding. And I see that that's been removed from my list here, but is the 25,000 thing still part of it?
I think based on the conversation with the chair and vice chair today, the discussion was to at least wait and have a fuller discussion and briefing about all three grants, and then decide what action the council wanted to take at that time. So, it may or may not.
Okay. So, the question is, would you like to have a briefing on this topic? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then, the council working.
Our delay of this, as it has been teed up, be a delay in Green Bike receiving the funds that they?
The, the grants don't stop. I mean, the application takes place, and then they're processed normally. So, this is a notice to you guys. As the legislative body, it's, it isn't an approval to move forward, but because there is match money involved, there, you know, there is a role for you on this one. So.
Find out more about what the impact would be to the grant funds and any plans.
Because, Mr. Chair, my concern isn't about giving, getting Green Bike the grant. It's about us having a better understanding of how advancing ordinances that allow other bike share systems to flourish in the city, while they may actually be undermining the very thing we've invested public dollars in for almost 10 years to build. That's a conversation I want to have. So, I don't mean to slow down Green Bike's funding.
I mean, essentially, sorry, it's, like, we could vote on grant, on the grant, and have, because they almost seem like two different, it's not that we don't want to give them the money, it's that we need to understand how the ordinance is going to work. So, it seems like we could probably go forward, right, and approve the money, but still have a briefing on the ordinances and have Green Bike come in and have some of those briefings even afterwards that are not sowing down the money. Right?
Yeah. I mean, I think.
Mr. Chair? I think that's, my whole point is that we need to have that conversation before we approve that. I mean, that you look at the technology and how it's come forward, you know, you see Lime now doing electric bikes, and how is that disruptive technology affecting Green Bike, and is it really appropriate funds for us to be looking at that? I'd love to have Lime actually come in and talk to us as well. So, it, for me, it's a bigger, it's a bigger picture for us to be looking at.
And I appreciate Councilmember Rogers getting my thought back on track, because that is exactly, I mean, that is one of the things that I'm also really curious about as well, because I do think that with the addition of Lime and Bird not, you know, doing the scooters, now with Lime doing the bicycles as well, there, we just need to figure out how to make all of this work together. And I would be, I would be somewhat reluctant just to give money, because we're nice, you know, without having, without having a broader discussion about, you know, how it's going to integrate with everything else that's being done.
I would agree. I just, functionally speaking, I found the dockless is much easier on last, first mile, last mile than the bike stations, especially if, the point is to expand it to other parts of the city. of the city. It probably doesn't meet as great a need in my neighborhood as a dockless concept would be. I'm not opposed to Green Bike's. I would love to see it still evolve. And our investment, I think, is a good idea in certain areas, but I think we need to be targeted in where those areas are and how they best function.
I, I agree, Councilmember. And I think, you know, looking at your district, my district, and Councilmember Rogers districts, or the, or the three districts that probably, I mean, well, I don't see, you know, the addition of, you know, the, the docked bikes anytime soon. So I do think, that's why I just want to have a more thorough conversation before we start giving money or granting money away.
Can I?
Councilmember Mendenhall.
If you, if any of you, my peers, haven't met with Green Bike recently about this, I encourage you to. And they, I think, what I'm hearing is that this, there's curiosity about dockless, there's interest in electric, and I'm hearing Green Bike say, we're interested in exploring whatever it is that the city wants us to explore and that their board wants to explore. But fundamentally, that's a nonprofit organization that we've invested in for almost a decade that has a really different purpose than the venture capital enterprises that are on our streets today. And I don't think that we should be drawing a red line through Green Bike to say, we really, you know, that's a model that's outdated because they're willing to evolve. And that's a, their, their, the mission of that as a nonprofit is so different from what we've seen play out with the venture capital models around the country, so.
Well, and, and while, you know, I personally am happy to meet with them and, and I'm willing to do that, I'm more curious about what their ideas are to evolve instead of whether or not we want them to evolve. Part of, you know, that's, that's kind of what we need to, what I am going to be looking for from them is what their ideas are, how they, you know, how they want to, or plan to stay relevant. If they want to expand into dockless, you know, how that's going to work. I'm, I'm more than open to doing that. What I'm concerned about though is without that information, granting money to a system that, that, you know, may not be obsolete, but is certainly going in that direction with the addition of, of these other services. So I, I think that, I think the responsibility frankly is on Green Bike to approach us with, with ideas on how they're going to innovate as, as opposed to us asking them to do so. Other questions on this? Okay. Cindy?
And I'll just point out that fortunately, we had listed this actually as an item on our public agenda, so that's why it was possible to have that much of a discussion on an announcement item. So thank you to the staff who thought ahead to list that. Okay, council working groups. We have a number of working groups right now. It's not like they're subcommittees, but it's just groups that, that have kind of organically formed or offshoots of, of the legislative subcommittee. We have, we have the housing working group that, this is just very, kind of what we've heard from council members and what the council chair has suggested. Originally the, let's see, we have Amy as the RDA chair on this, I'll just skip to that. And then we had.
The council chair was on there.
Yeah.
But we've replaced the council chair with the RDA vice chair.
Okay. And then the other thought was Councilmember Johnston, based on his subject matter expertise of the Housing Commission and that type of a thing. So really, all seven of you could be on all of these, but then it would be the whole council and not a working group. So it's really hard to get figured out who to invite when. So we want to come back to you and ask you for your feedback on whether we're going in the right direction. Okay, the legislative subcommittee. Every year we have a feedback from council members that it gets a little tricky when we, we have under a policy that the, the former chair continues through April or through the end of the legislative session, and that is for continuity purposes. So that that person who has been working throughout the summer and fall and winter still has the knowledge base, the, the group can take advantage of that person's knowledge base and the contacts and that type of a thing. But at the same time, it seems like we need the council chair. And so that was, that's been a struggle for a few years. And so the one idea is to slightly alter it and have the current council chair, the current RDA chair, and the immediate past council chair. So that you're, you're solving that problem of your chair, the chair problem. So, so we can give you that as food for thought. It's not anything that would start anytime soon, it's just for you to think about. And you may come up with, you know, four or five other different ideas. But it does seem very difficult to have the mix of a former chair and not a current chair. It doesn't matter right now because we have both. Anyway, then the Mill Creek Working Group.
Oh, Cindy, I just had a suggestion.
Okay.
That if the, let's see, the immediate past council chair is, does not seek reelection that year for some strange reason, like with Luke Garrett when he was.
Oh, sure.
Chair, what if the vice chair then took that, that spot? That's just in case that something does pop up like that.
Yeah, if they didn't seek reelection or were not, not reelected.
Okay. Okay, so, so we will bring that back to you, but in the meantime, if you have ideas that you want to suggest, then we'll write those up as, as options. Then it looks like a Mill Creek Working Group has formed based upon necessity. We have the council chair, the council vice chair, and the District Seven representative. Although in, I don't know if it's the council chair or if it's the, I mean, council vice chair, or if at some points it's also, I don't know. I'm confused.
Cindy, my, my thought on this one is that we, on, on this one in particular, it'd be flexible. Because, you know, again, having a working group with three is important. This is a fairly complex issue just because of the, the timing of it. And so there, there may have to be, you know, some movement, you know, so that Councilmember Mendenhall, who serves on the Utah League of Cities and Towns Board, would also be included. And so there may have to be, you know, some meetings where, you know, we, we move that group around. But, but I think that the, you know, in general, you've caught the, the staff has caught the idea of what we've, what we're looking for.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, so while you're along, talking along those lines, one thing that occasionally happens is that you may have two members of one of these subgroups that aren't available. And it seems relevant in a lot of cases to check to see if any other council members are available to participate in a meeting. A good example is tomorrow, there's a meeting that just one council member was able to attend. Now it looks like one other would be available. May we have permission of the group to reach out to other council members when the regular, those regularly in attendance at the group.
Definitely.
Aren't able? Okay.
And can I say one more thing about the Mill Creek Working Group? This one, we're all hands on deck on this right now. I mean, I think, you know, every, you're all, everyone's going to be involved in this one because it is, it is that big of a deal. So everyone's going to be looped in on this as this moves forward in the next few weeks.
Okay. And then the final one that we have here is the Inland Port Working Group. And that would be the chair, the vice chair, who also happens to be an Inland Port Board member. And then our immediate past chair, who has been through all of the issues with the legislators for the past year. So then the other thing I wanted to ask you is, it seems like there are times when we need a subject matter expert as staff. And like, it seems like, well, it would be relevant to invite so-and-so because he or she happens to know about the justice system or any number of things, clean air, whatever, maybe there's a water specialist or something. And as long as those folks that are subject matter experts don't have a conflict of interest, it's been relevant for us to just pull them in. You may have the chair and vice chair, or the RDA chair and the council chair, and then a subject matter expert. So we've done that a little bit. And I think it would be really nice for us as staff if we could just work with each of you to, to think about your subject matter expertise so that we do have a good list to draw from as these unusual topics come up.
And Cindy, I, I think it's important that we all remember that these groups are fluid. Adding, adding names to it at least gives some predictability to staff and the administration. So, you know, if there are issues that come up, you know, they know who, you know, generally to, to be looking at. But they're fluid. So it's not like, hey, if you're not on one of these groups, then, you know, you're not going to know what's going on. That's, it's just, we needed to have some predictability, but understanding that we need all of us to do this, so.
May I ask a question? I assume the, the legislative subcommittee, the housing working group potentially, and the inland port working group will last more than the year. Safe assumption? There seem to be long-term issues that aren't, are changing enough and have those impacts.
I, so personally, I agree. I think that, you know, that is, is probab, legislative maybe not, but, you know, I think the housing working group, the inland port working group, there, there probably is, is some importance of keeping that continuity. But as we always are reminded by our staff, we can't bind a future council. So, you know, I think while it's, it's safe for us to have that, you know, that understanding that, you know, these, these groups may extend, but it has to be, you know, the discretion, I think, of, you know, whoever the chair is and whatever the council makeup is at the time. But, but you're absolutely right. I mean, you know, there, there has to be some predictability on it.
Legislative has survived multiple councils now and likely will survive multiple councils, all things considered. My question though is the workload for certain individuals in certain leadership positions that goes above and beyond their existing workload. So if you choose to be a chair or vice chair, either RDA or the council, you're taking on a lot anyway, right? And based on our consent here, you're taking on these also. Is that tenable? I know for those who are probably talking about it now, perhaps you've said yes. And bless you all for that. But is it tenable to take that workload on in these, because it's multiple, I know you hear you're saying about what's a shared workload, but realistically, the expectation is once you get in here and you get the expert, the experience, the knowledge base, the connections, part of the reason we have these people on here is because of that happened last year. You have the connections with the vice past chair and the current chairs.
Yeah. So I think that in, in this case, we, you know, we, we have to play the hand that we're dealt. You know, these, you know, this group, you know, because of whatever the makeup, the expertise, the relationships, yeah, you know, that's just something that I think, you know, we're gonna, if, if we're on that group, we have to figure it out. You know, we just have to, you know, leadership is one of those things where, you know, all of us who, you know, serve in leadership have chosen to do that. So, you know, I, the, the workload is real. It's, it's, you know, as Councilmember Mendenhall can attest, I mean, there's, there's a lot that goes into it, but we put ourselves up to that one. So that one I'm less concerned about than, but I, your point is absolutely valid on these working groups. I just don't know how we get around.
Okay. I, I just put that up there because I understand the rationale. We've talked through this multiple times. On, so the legislative subcommittee, the expert, expectation is you're a voting member of the LPC to some extent.
Yeah.
And there's a commitment inherent to that, to show up to the meetings, those kind of things. It's not the same level as Councilmember Mendenhall being on the board, but there's an external commitment to that, the same as Mr. Rogers on the inland port board has. So just, I keep that as an awareness piece that when we're putting these, we're putting people on here because of your experience, right, expertise, but also because of the position you've taken on. But if that position is one of those reasons you continue on, it does put a significant burden on future leadership to some extent, so.
Sorry that that took so long. Please just give us your feedback. We're just trying to.
Sorry.
Write down what we think we're supposed to be doing.
Great. Thank you, Cindy. All right. Now we're back to the legislative update. So David Litback, Lynn Pace, and our wonderful budget finance. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just need to alert you to the fact that I have an obligation at seven in Sandy.
Yeah.
So I have about 15 minutes. If you want.
If you take more than 15 minutes, that's too much time.
Okay, good. So I just wanted, whatever it is you want from me.
You are good. That, I love the fact that you have a commitment.
We will make sure he has a commitment 15 minutes after.
Anyway, to that end, I guess what I'd like to do is, is, is first to say, what's on your mind? What do you want to talk about? I could, I could give you an update, but I can do that via email. So let's get to your questions first. It's been a relatively quiet start of the session, not a lot going on.
You mean, what do we want to discuss publicly?
Yeah.
That's a good, that is the question. I would say at this point, tell, so the, the legislation that, that you're all following right now, tell, tell us a little bit about those things.
Well, the, what, what I would direct your attention to is, and the list I've got in front of me is a list of our priorities. And I'd sort of, I can give you an update on all of those. The water bills, only one of those bills has moved. It's the Senate bill, extraterritorial jurisdiction has moved out of committee. It's now on the Senate floor. Not a lot more has happened on those bills. We, we are still relatively optimistic that those three bills will move forward unchanged, which is our hope. Sales tax, there is lots and lots of discussion about sales tax and the possibility of restructuring sales tax, which would involve some, some portion of broadening the base, some element of reducing the rate, and perhaps some element of a tax cut, either in income tax or sales tax. No one knows where that will end up yet. The House is working on it. They don't even have a proposal yet, although they've said they'll have one by the end of the week. And.
Who's, who's leading that discussion?
Representative Spendlov and Representative Quinn are leading that effort. Now, related to that, but I would, I would say secondary to that is a discussion about altering the current sales tax distribution model. Representative Schultz is leading that dialogue. But as I have said many times, I don't know how you can have any conversation about how to divide the pie differently until you know what the pie is. And so what I keep saying to people is, after you decide how much you're going to expand the base, who's in, who's out, how much you're going to reduce the rate, how much of a tax cut you're going to give, when you're through with all of that, let us know and then we can start to, to talk about distribution. So.
Good luck with the budget, Mary Beth.
So. But that's where things are today, is very fluid, but it is a, it's not just something we're watching, it is a real, I mean, it's a real issue. And depending on who you're talking to among the legislators, it's either an issue they're going to talk about or an issue they're determined to push across the finish line. And I get different opinions depending on who you speak to and on what day. Jumping forward, housing affordability, there's, yes.
Before, before you move forward, so have you talked on the, on the sales tax distribution piece, have you or our legislative, the city's legislative team met with the chamber?
Yes.
Okay. How have those discussions gone?
Discussions have gone very well. They acknowledged that there is, that this is a difficult issue to get our arms around this session. And we've said, good, why don't you share with us the message that it can't be done and we need an interim study to talk about it? They have been unwilling to do that.
They've been what?
Unwilling to do that.
Okay. Councilmember Wharton?
I, um, sorry, I don't have a question.
Oh.
I don't know why my mic was on.
Oh, that's okay.
But then I was like, should I take the opportunity?
You're, you're an attorney. Don't, yeah, I thought that's what you guys do.
I mean, yeah, like, I don't usually turn down the opportunity. And I, actually, I really would, like, in the interest of time, if we could just jump to HB 262, because I would like to hear anything that you can tell me.
Okay, we can do that. House Bill 262 is a relative, relatively obscure bill that just came out yesterday and it's hardly gathered any attention. But it is a bill proposed by Representative Potter that would deal with the, a boundary adjustment, or rather, the annexation of a substantially isolated peninsula of territory that essentially looks like a definition crafted to describe the brickyard without naming it by name. Does that make sense? The bill just came out yesterday and it has been, obviously, it's. The bill just came out yesterday, and it has been, obviously, it's created lots and lots of chatter here and on Capitol Hill. Lots of people wondering what's behind it, what's motivating it, what they're thinking, and how we reach a solution. There have been multiple meetings that have occurred today, some of which our city staff and council members have been, been involved in. But right now, it's just a lot of dialogue, unless you have more specific questions. No, the only formal movement, I mean, there was, there was dialogue last week. The formal movement was the introduction of the bill yesterday.
And to be clear, the formal movement can happen quickly, right? I mean, it could be assigned to a city.
It could pop up on an agenda this week, right?
It could pop up on an, on an agenda, probably, not tonight, because what it, what it would do, so it's in rules right now. So, rules would send it to one of the subcommittee, or one of the committees. The committee would then put it up, but they could put it up for, you know, with 24 hours' notice. That's it.
So, have we been actively engaging with all of the Salt Lake City lawmakers on this?
The Salt Lake, they are aware of it. I can tell you the Salt Lake City lawmakers are not the problem.
Right. Right. Okay. Are there any other groups other than League of Cities and Towns that would be interested in this, the impacts of legislation like this?
There are lots of other cities. There are, but I, but I think generally speaking, this, this, to most people, this is a private squabble among a couple of, a couple of relatives, and it's amusing for them to watch, but they have no, no dog in the fight. And no stake in the outcome.
Right. But they're going to vote on it. So...
Well, I'm just, I thought you were talking about interest groups. Yes, every legislator will have to vote on it. But most interest groups, is there any other, other interest group out there that will weigh in on this? Probably not, because the annexation of territory or the change of boundaries does not automatically affect any school districts or service providers. So, it doesn't affect them.
And the da, the danger with that is, it seems to be very, very specific, but it opens the door and creates a terrible precedent for another city to aggressively go after a portion of another cit, another incorporated city just because it wants to. And what the legislature is doing with this bill is opening that door so that instead of having city-to-city dialogue, you can have one city go up and, and move forward. But there, there are huge implications that if, if other cities really, you know, look into what it means, that, you know, deal with, you know, bond ratings.
Right.
You know, how we, how we bond, what, what bond council, you know, is, is going to do, you know, with the, with the knowledge that boundaries are now fluid.
Right.
It has a potential to really wreak havoc with the systems of municipal government.
Right. I guess, and I understand that. I, I guess, my question is more, like, you'd think that with that, that many far-reaching consequences, that there would be other advocacy groups that might be interested in, like, the ramifications here? And, and do all of the, have we made efforts to inform, like, all of the residents in this area that they're, that they would become residents of a different city without their choice? Like, have we made that extra effort?
I suspect not. The bill just came out yesterday. But the bill is drafted to, it's so that upon the signature of 50% of the property owners, or I assume signatures representing 50% of the area, of a substantially isolated peninsula, the property, the jurisdictional, jurisdiction could then change hands. But council member Luke is correct in his assessment of what, of the consequences, because if you have hypothetically, and this isn't hypothetical, right, there are, there are more, there's more than one place where this would apply in the, in the state, and even in the city. What that does is it gives the property owners bargaining power, essentially, to go to the two cities and to say, "Make me a deal." Who's going to give me the best deal here? Who's going to give me the best development rights, whatever it might be? And they create, in effect, a bidding war between the two cities as to who will give them the most, and they sign or don't sign the petition at that point. So, it, it, it creates a lot of problems by opening the door to make boundaries less permanent than they historically have been. But again, the challenge we've got is that there's not a lot of people who care about city boundaries, except cities.
Thank you.
Other questions? No, we're so excited, though. Thank you.
Obviously, and I, I don't mean to be cryptic on this, there will be much more to come, and there's much more that we are certainly working on, but those are, those are items that are not really suitable for public discussion because they're, they're ongoing discussions of possibilities that are not really firm yet, so.
Mary Beth, I know you're, you have sales tax information that you can talk about.
Yeah, I just wanted to, so first of all, I want to thank Andrew, Andrew Reed, who actually did all of this work. We actually took all the paper copies, and he actually went to the State Tax Commission, and we have historical data dating back to 2004 all the way through to 2018. So, this is good for us because you guys can have the big picture from 2004 through. So, I want to thank him because he's worked weekends to get this data so that administration and council can have it. So, this first slide is going to show you the point-of-sale number for the fiscal year, what Salt Lake City received, what the difference is. That difference is the difference between the 50-50 split, right? So, that portion right there, so if we, if we look at 2018, the $23,283,842, that's the portion that is point-of-sale, right, that is, that is the population portion that actually is going to other communities from Salt Lake City. The percentage of change is the percentage of change in the point-of-sale difference, so that's year-to-year difference in change. Of that, the population is the percentage of population to the state's population, and as you can see, it's decreased significantly from 7.8% down to 6.4%. That's the reason that we continue to have a decrease in our population percentage.
And just to do a little numbers interpreting, if the chart is a little hard to read, I think this is emphasizing that Salt Lake City is more of a commercial center than a residential center, which I think is something we all know. But the trend is that we're becoming more of a commercial center and less of a population center. And so, any change in the formula that would take us more to population would, would disadvantage us. Or, if we changed just to point-of-sale, it would significantly advantage us, as you can see.
So, this is kind of just a graph of that same, that, what we, what I showed you before, because graphs always seem to make it easier for me. So, the blue portion is the portion that obviously is the portion that we are, that is not a point-of-sale portion, that we're giving away because our population is low compared to the state. And then this is interesting, so basically, this is saying from 2004 to 2018, Salt Lake City's population has grown about 8%, but the state's population has grown 32%, which goes to the fact that Jennifer just spoke to, is that the state's population is growing faster than Salt Lake City's population. So, the state's, that 50-50 split is becoming less and less for Salt Lake City as far as population is concerned. We're, we're making more money, but we're getting less compared to the rest of the state.
So, when people talk about the 1% local option, or the 1% that goes to cities, we don't actually keep 1%. We keep something like .75, right, of that one?
Or probably less. The last time, I think, was like .76. So, as our population goes down, that number goes down. It's probably about .73 now, .72?
Are other questions for Lynn or David? They will be up at the Capitol, so. Thank you for doing that. Enjoy your tickets.
Thank you. We will continue to be in touch. All of these issues are obviously very fluid, and so they're changing day to day. But we will, we will, we will keep council staff and probably the council chair informed of developments.
Great.
Because we have this database now, we can on-the-fly tell you scenarios, so.
Perfect. That, knowing that we had, knowing that we have that tool is-
Yep.
...really, really good.
Yeah, he's amazing, so.
Okay. All right. So, with that, we are adjourned until 7:00 across the hall, where we will reconvene in our formal meeting.